Can you hear us, Rob?
Rob, Rob, I, I'm sorry. Rob, I.
Jesse, I. No problem. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, this will be a public hearing discussion in motion for Holiday's superstores for a 3-2 off-sale malt liquor license request in our packets. It's pages one through 12. Come up to the microphone, pull it right up to you so we can hear. Give us your name and address for the record.
Tony Hoffman, store manager for the Holiday Station at 9444 Lake Drive.
Thank you. And give us a quick rundown of what you're asking for tonight.
I'm just asking for a 3-2 license renewal this evening.
All right. Thank you. So can we waive? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and Council, let me just go through our memo that's in your packets, if I may.
But can we waive the reading of all the public notice?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure I covered the memo in your packets. It's dated November 20 from Jake Steen and Doug Junker. One correction, and I tried to actually correct this on my computer and it was freezing up on me, so I'll do it verbally. In page four of the packet, three of the memo, it says, "No person under the age of 18 shall be employed in any rooms constituting the place in which intoxicating liquors or 3.2% malt liquor are sold at retail." That's been changed under our ordinances and so it would now read, "No person under the age of 18 shall be allowed to sell intoxicating liquors or 3.2% malt liquor," and would then strike the rest of the paragraph. So I want to make that correction so everybody understands that's not a condition that applies any longer to this use and to this license. Thank you.
Are there any other points of discussion or questions?
Should see if there's any additional public testimony.
Anyone from the public want to speak on that issue? All right. So we'll close that part of the public hearing to the right to reopen it if necessary. And now, do we have any questions or discussion?
I have a question. There's nothing in here but they passed. We had no violations there, the previous ones?
I'm sorry, Rob, is there a question?
Any record of violations selling underage or?
Ah, I'd be, I, the date I believe we passed was November 2nd. I may be a couple of days off, but yeah, we passed the undercover statute.
It is my understanding that they've had no violations.
No other questions.
All right. So I'll make the motion to approve the Holiday Station Stores 3-2 off-sale malt, off-sale malt liquor license request at 9444 Lake Drive, subject to attorney memo dated November 20th, 2023, conditions required under Minnesota law, and the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, listed 1 through 4. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second. Do we need to include the amendment that Bill read in?
You can just make reference to it.
And this would include the?
Correction by the city attorney.
By the city attorney.
Of the city attorney's work.
All right. Anything else? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Thank you.
That was easy, huh?
That was, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. So we're on to number 10. You're good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
The Planning Commission report. I was Elias on last Wednesday. The Planning Commission met on the 15th. There were no applications. And so Elizabeth and our planning tech Eleanor Hahn presented the Planning Commission and anybody else who was here with a really informative workshop on planning and zoning, including guidelines, rules, and regulations, and how to apply these to our city of Columbus. The meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM. It was a best and a really good, a good update and a reminder for all of us. So thank you, Elizabeth. So that was that. And now we're on to the Dave Pavoni IUP RZB request at 1673 Potomac Street, and it's in our enclosure. So Bill, I'll have you take this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, you have a couple of things in your packet. One is a memo from the planning and zoning technician, and I would need to just correct a couple of things in the conditions of approval, so if you can go to that memo now, that'd be great. On page three of the memo are the statement of the recommended conditions. And the first one, the term would have to expire on November 1, 2028. That would be approximately five years from now, but it would have to, based upon the recent amendment of the City Code, it would have to expire at the same time as the rest of the interim use permits, which were extended by the City Code amendment. So that, so it would read instead of, well, it'd simply read, "The term of the IUP shall expire on November 1, 2028," and then you'd strike the rest of the sentence.
I'm sorry, will you tell me again where you're reading?
Sure. It's in, in the packet. It's the planner's memo, I believe it looks like it's on page 30.
Okay, yep.
And the conditions of approval. The first sentence would read, "The term of the IUP shall expire November 1, 2028, period," and then the rest of the sentence. And then there's no reapplication. Under the new code, there are no IUPs for residential zone business. Likewise, the second condition would be stricken because there's no reinstatement of an IUP. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Those are the only comments I have on the memo. In addition, since Mr. Pavoni applied for an interim use permit while the Code Amendment was pending, we thought it was important to recite that in a resolution so it's clear, you know, what, what happened first, what happened next. And so that is in the city attorney's resolution. Megan Rogers drafted the resolution. The memo itself makes it clear that there's no reapplication. This resolution simply restates all the steps that it took to get here, including the effect of the Code Amendment. So if you're wanting to approve the interim use permit, then you would adopt this resolution, which I don't know if we have a number yet.
Resolution would be number 17, 2317.
Any other questions for the attorney?
Not for the attorney, just for the process.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm just curious because the last time Dave came in, gave the information, there was question and answers, and then it was tabled, and there was more questions that were sent, but I didn't see anything come back.
I believe in the packet, there's both the initial Q and A that went back and forth, and there's subsequent responses that Mr. Pavoni provided. I read that today in the packet, so it is, it is in the packet. It's in the form of a, kind of a Q and A type response. Would you like us to find that in the?
Maybe it was just mine that got missed then, because I did read through those.
Sure, sure. But I read through it this afternoon in preparation for the meeting. I don't know if, Elizabeth, do you want to scroll to that on the screen?
I think it's on page nine and 10 of the packet. And 11. Is that what you're talking about, Bill?
No, those weren't mine.
Okay. So you're talking about the, the questions you submitted?
Yes.
Yes, and there were some that I submitted that didn't get answered as well.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I believe what happened is the staff and the attorney's office worked to essentially combine questions, since we're receiving questions from multiple locations. So it was essentially to streamline the questions and responses. So if your specific question isn't answered, it should be answered in a, in a similar response. There was an effort to take all the questions from the public and the council members and put them in one set of Q and A. And I believe that is the second response from Mr. Pavoni and, what's that on? Page 26, looks like.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, but I didn't see him.
Elizabeth, maybe you can address, were these compiled by Eleanor from the various?
So questions were compiled and they were discussed both with Eleanor and Dean, and after that, they were forwarded to the attorney's office because they were not planning questions. They were legal questions. And at that time, they were then combined into a response to the applicant, and the applicant came back with answers. And then we indicated at the last meeting, we would update the memo with these answers. Because it was, I want to say, a day before the, the last agenda that the applicant, the applicant came in, and there was not a, there was not a subsequent memo going back to the, to the applicant.
And maybe council members, if there's something in particular you want to draw out in those questions, you know, I'm not sure which questions weren't answered in your view, so if you can let us know what, what you, you'd like to know. The applicants here, this is not a public hearing, but certainly the mayor could entertain responses.
So, and I don't have the website with me, but I was doing some research, and I found on a website, a list of names of people that were employed on the premises at Dave Pavoni's company. So my question was, like, one was a shipping and receiving, one was, you know, something else that would, you would need to be on site to do that position. So it was a question, just to confirm, and I know that he has said in the past that he has no employees on site, but this website said that he did. So I was just curious if he could confirm once again that, that there's no other employees on site.
I guess I'd have to see the internet thing you're looking at.
I know, that's what I sent, so I don't know if Elizabeth, if you still have that.
See that to address it.
Well, let's, let's go through the mayor as the chair. So first of all, Mr. Mayor and Council, when I, when I reviewed the responses, the most recent responses from Mr. Pavoni, he did indicate, most of the employees work remotely and are only on site as needed. So the shipping and receiving staff, I, I don't know if you want to address that, Mr. Mayor, to, to the applicant?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, my wife and I do all the shipping and receiving, and the children. Don't know what you saw.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, anyone?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, one thing I want to make clear in your decision on the resolution is, under the recently adopted amendment, Mr. Pavoni, like every other interim use permit holder, can continue to exist for five years under the conditions that were previously approved. So while you may have questions, and we can certainly, as, as time goes on, if there are concerns, we can direct, you know, compliance inspections and, and follow-up. I would indicate to you that legally, he has a right to exist whether or not you approve this resolution. So for that reason, the city attorney's office is recommending adoption of the resolution.
That's helpful, thank you for clarifying that. I just have one question. So we do have a compliance inspector now, and part of what he does is he visits businesses to make sure that they are in compliance with the conditions. Would you allow this person on your property?
If there was a reason.
It's an annual inspection.
Annual inspection, and every other property has had this person there?
Of all businesses.
All six?
No, even the commercial businesses with CUPs. That's what we're setting up.
We're talking about IUPs.
Yeah, well, there's only six that have IUPs, and my understanding from Elizabeth, and maybe you can clarify this, Elizabeth, two are no longer in business anymore, two we're going to fit under home occupation. Is that right? Am I getting that right?
Yes.
So there's not going to be six anymore.
And to be clear, Mr. Mayor and Council, I believe what Councilmember Haglund's referring to is an ongoing, or a, a program. I mean, this, this person was just hired in the last year.
Right, yes.
So this is not something that's, that's been a past practice, it's something that's going to be implemented on a going-forward basis.
Correct. And so I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because I'm assuming you don't know about this new program, but there is a new program, and it's for businesses that operate under a CUP, so there's 60-some of those, and then whoever's left under the IUP.
I'm aware of all your communistic style.
I'm sorry, I'll.
I'm aware of all your communistic-style tyranny that you've been putting on the city, but until there is a, a complaint, a problem, an issue, then, then I would, I would, I would accept the call and allow the compliance officer on my property.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we'll, we'll look at the, the program as it goes forward, and there are certain, there are certain aspects of code compliance where it's mandatory to allow people on your property, and there's others that are voluntary. And so we'll make sure that, that our compliance officer does those things that require, if they require the permission of the property owner, we'll seek that, and if not, we'll, you know, we'll file, follow other procedures. But I think it's helpful to let Mr. Pavoni know that there is a compliance program that's active in the city, and, and we'll utilize that for all permit holders.
Then this question is directed to Bill, so is that, should that be put in as a condition?
It, it doesn't.
Because we, we do have that as conditions in our CUPs and stuff now, so.
If you like, it can be. It's, it's not required. If you, if it's something you're going to do with all permit holders, then it, we don't need a special condition in order to do that. In fact, those that didn't seek renewal of their IUP are subject to the same requirements. But it, it's certainly something that you, will comply with annual compliance checks, something to that effect.
Yeah, I would like to have that added, please.
Or maybe will, will be subject to. I don't, I don't know. We won't, we won't try and guess what the compliance is going to be able to say we'll be subject to.
I mean, I think we're adding that in all of the new CUPs, so I just think, to be consistent, we should, we should include that.
I don't think that's problematic. The permit holder will be subject to annual compliance inspections on the same basis as other permit holders.
It's only fair.
That's number 20.
That would be number 12.
Looks like 12.
Well, unless you take the two, or that one out, so.
Correct.
It would be number 11, right?
New 11.
New 11.
Anything else, anyone?
I don't see his hand up.
All right, in that case, I will make the motion to approve Resolution 2317, approving a five-year extension of the interim use permit for a residential zone business operating at 16731 Potomac Street in northeast Columbus, with the addition of, of the new number 11.
I can read them for you if you like.
Sure, go ahead.
Number one would be changed. The term of the IUP shall expire on November 1, 2028, concurrent with the other IUPs in the city. Number two is stricken. A new number 11 is added. Interim use permit will be subject to annual compliance inspections on the same basis as other permit holders in the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
This is Janet.
I'll second.
Oh, go for it.
Go ahead, Janet.
Go for it. Be my guest.
I'll second it, Ron.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Actually, actually, at this time, I want to withdraw my, my, withdraw my application. Can I do that, Bill?
Yep, up until action by the council, the applicant's free to withdraw his application. Mr. Pavoni, could you provide that in writing to the city, if you wouldn't mind? You can just scratch out a note to me, or you can drop it off with Elizabeth.
All right. So then we'll move on to the Waldock Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation Petition Request. And what will the resolution number of that be? 18? Or no?
That should be 18.
This new thing would be 17?
That'd be correct, you'd stick with 17, so the next one would be 17 since the resolution was not adopted.
So Elizabeth, would you like to explain this one to us, please?
Several months ago, we approved a subdivision, it was Waldock Edition, and there were several new lots. In the back of the lot, there was a rather large lot, which was Lot 5, and then right next to it, Lot 4. In your additions, there's a, a final plat in there on the very last page. In this particular case, Waldocks would like to reconfigure lots 4 and 5 by just moving a lot line to the west. And, and basically, it makes two, it doesn't make, it makes two medium-sized lots, not one large lot and one small lot. And because we, they recorded the plat, drainage and utility easements are in each of the boundaries. So what we have to do is, we have to vacate drainage and utility easements before he does a second addition, because you don't want drainage and utility easements hanging out in the middle of a lot. And so, so we have to go through a vacation process to vacate them, because when you plat them, they're, they're of record. And so statute says that when you vacate drainage and utility easements, there, you have to have a resolution to set a hearing, and then you also have two weeks' notice. So the notice is a little bit off the regular 10-day notice, because it's a 14-day notice, and the council holds the hearing on a vacation, not the Planning Commission. So what you have before you is the resolution to vacate the original drainage and utility easements, or a portion thereof, in order to replat, which is the second addition, and new drainage and utility easements will be placed along the new boundary line. And that, that would be a condition. We would not vacate drainage and utility easements unless new ones were going to be placed on the new lots. So what will happen is, is the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the preliminary and final plat on December 6th. Then it will come to you, city council members. City council members will hold a vacation hearing on the 13th. And then after that vacation hearing, if everything goes well, you will hear the recommendation of the Planning Commission of the plat, and then approve the plat subject to new drainage and utility easements, and then we'll make final action declaring the new vacation easements, the new drainage and utility easements on the final plat. So there's a kind of a, a process to, to be had here, and the difference is, is we generally don't have a resolution calling for a hearing, but in this case, it is required.
Everybody got that?
No, could you repeat it? I'm just kidding.
Okay.
All right. So then we will make a motion to approve Resolution 2317 again, or instead of, a resolution setting a public hearing for the vacation of a portion of a drainage and utility easement in the city of Columbus, Minnesota. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions?
I do have one quick question, I was just curious. So you said they're making that bigger lot into two smaller lots.
It's, lots 4 and 5 exist today, and they're moving the lot line to the west, so they're not making any new lots, they're just reconfiguring the current lots. So they're taking a big lot and a smaller lot, making two medium-sized lots.
Okay.
In this, in this particular case. So again, if you move the lot line, the lot line has the drainage and utility easements. If you move the lot line, you'd have drainage and utility easements hanging out in the middle of a lot, and that's what we're vacating. And then they'll really reestablish them. I will say, the wording, I had too many of those, so I will correct that in the resolution. It's a portion of, because there's a wetland in between the drainage and utility easements, we cannot vacate the drainage and utility easement that was set for Rice Creek. So that portion language was, gave me a little, too many of those.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? So we've got a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Staff and consultants report. Engineer Kevin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. The first item on the agenda is approval of estimate number one to Batumus Roadways. This is in regards to our repair work we did on 147th Avenue near West Freeway Drive. The project is essentially complete, but this is just our first estimate. We're still holding retainage, so we would ask approval of that first payment.
Anybody? Go for it, Ron.
What?
Who wants to make the motion?
I can do it. So I move to approve estimate number one for 147th Avenue repairs, pay requesting the amount of $36,852.73 to Batumus Roadways Incorporated.
I'll second it, Ron.
Any other questions or? So how did it turn out? It's a big question.
It turned out very well. It should work great, should improve our drainage, Jim shouldn't have any more.
All right. Okay, very good. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
The second item I have is just more of an information item. I'm not sure how familiar you are with this, but I wanted to bring you up to speed, that there is a new mandate that's been coming down from the EPA in regards to lead service lines that are under the jurisdiction of public water systems. And they're being required to inventory all of their service lines in regards to the type of material, location, et cetera. And so that's being passed down in this, in our situation, through the Minnesota Department of Health. And so they are implementing this requirement upon all public agencies that oversee water systems. And so, being that the city of Columbus does have a water system, the requirement applies to you as well. And, but the good news is, is that this is not an unfunded mandate with the passage of the Infrastructure and Investment and Jobs Act. There was money that came along to help the agencies do this inventory. And so this, this whole program is being managed by the Department of Health, this whole grant program. And so they have provided funds set aside to do the inventory. And so consulting firms like Bolton and Mink have applied to be on their list of approved contractors to perform the inventories. And they also solicited all these public agencies to apply for that grant funding if they wish to have assistance in that inventory. And so Jim did apply for the, for the funding, was approved, and Jim could indicate who his preferred consultant was, and, and so I elbowed him and said, "Put down Bolton and Mink." And so the first wave of this, that Department of Health, I mean, because there are so many agencies that have applied, they've basically said that any community with fewer than 300 service connections would be the first to go. And so with, with Columbus having around. And so with, with Columbus having around sixty or seventy service connections, we're in that first round. And so we did get a solicitation from the Department of Health to provide them with a scope and fee for our services. And so we've submitted that to the Department of Health, and now we're just waiting for a work order to proceed. So that's kind of where it's at. With that scope, we will, we will put all of the water services on our GEIS system, so they're all documented through that database. And, but it also might require that with some of these service connections, we know that our system doesn't have lead service in the public right of way, but we're not necessarily a hundred percent sure of what's, what we've connected to. So it may require that we do some research on building permits. It may require that if we can't find that information, we may have to go to that business or to that connection and do some kind of inspection to see if we can determine what that service consists of. So, so for information only at this point, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
I have one question. So this is only for residences and businesses that are hooked up to municipal water, right? Not, not private?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right.
The next item that is on my list, and before I kind of get to that, just to give you an update on our.
Excuse me, one second, Kevin. Elizabeth, do I need a motion for that or not?
I wasn't sure whether we needed a motion to proceed with the scope of work. So I, I put a motion in there, but I wasn't sure whether you needed one.
I don't think it's required, because the contract is with the Department of Health, so. And, so I don't think you need a motion, but I'll defer to anybody else.
Mr. Mayor and council, I think you were providing information, so I don't think a motion is needed.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Yep. Next time, I just wanted to bring you up to date on our LRIP application for Hornsby Street North. With these applications, we solicit support from a number of our local elected officials. And so we did get a letter of support from Representative West and Senator Kuhn to our LRIP application. We'll also solicit letter of support from the Chamber of Commerce. I did also meet with the Anoka County Transportation Committee last week that because, again, like we did for West Freeway Drive on the other side of the freeway, we had to have the county highway department sponsor our project. And so the same would apply if we get funded for this particular project. And so we need to have the, the county on board with our application as well. And so I met with the county transportation committee, explained the project. They did recommend supporting our application, so that'll go to the full board for approval at their meeting on, I think, December 1st. So, so those wheels are all turning and going as planned. So with that little prelude, we've also been asked for, to support the Lino Lakes application for an LRIP project, which is essentially an extension of Lyons. I think, I mean, Elizabeth can give a little bit more information, but it's kind of a, we're all kind of approaching this as a one-for-all, all-for-one type process. So maybe Elizabeth can explain a little bit more.
Because we're excited to provide full support. I'm just reading your memo.
In this particular case, there was a project, and it was introduced to you a couple of months ago with the A U A R, and it was a joint project with the city of Lino Lakes. There's a developer called Skanel, and they are looking at a project, and they bought a rather large parcel of land, which was the Ray Mine Properties. And in this particular case, Lino Lakes is applying for LRIP funds in order to upgrade their road, and the road is Outer Lake Road. And if, for those of you who are familiar, it's off of County Route 14. I don't, I don't remember whether it's the road between McDonald's and Caribou, but it's that, one of those roads going north. And as far as their first segment of improvements for, for road funding, and I'm not sure whether they're asking for public utility funding. But again, they're looking for a letter of support in the project. And what I indicated to Kevin earlier is, you know, this is a joint effort, whether it's the two counties and the cities, and we should all probably support each other as, as a team effort, whether it's North Hornsby, North Hornsby, or whether it's this particular project. Because I think the more support we have for the projects, perhaps at the legislature during the bonding session, we'll get more money in the, in the capital, and if I get this wrong, Bill, in the capital pot, so that the LRIP pot is that much bigger, so that these projects are funded, because it's kind of, that's kind of how it all, the funding comes from the legislature. So in big picture, I think that we don't want to be, I'm not saying left behind, but we don't want to be left out. And so I want to make sure that we put our request in for support while others are doing the same thing for different projects. So I talked briefly with Kevin prior to the meeting, saying, you know, we can, we can support Lino, but I think Lino should support ours, and maybe we should start looking at the northerly part, because the Skanel project starts on 14 and it ends just south of our 145th. And Lyons Street, which is what we call it, they, they call it Elmcrest, I think. Again, we're talking about gravel roads that do not have public utilities on, in either of our communities or jurisdictions.
Elizabeth, can you pull up this map? Because I was, I was confused, because I'm not very good at reading these things. I was confused as to what this was, what this, the letter of support was actually referring to. There's this little, like what, it says, removing Elmcrest between heritage and new construction to Elmcrest. So I didn't, I just wasn't, is it just this little section here that they're asking for our support?
Yeah, I believe it's a realignment of, of that connection.
Does it end there, and it's not going to continue on there, or is it just another way to get, or you can see it on there? Are they, are they adding that and then taking out this part?
They're, they're asking for support. See, the, this, this will be the new intersection from, into, I think this is, I think this is the, this is Outer Lake Road. This will be the new connection from County Route 14.
Yeah, they're not taking out what's existing there. They're just making a new connection on the north end. That little connection from west to east will, will be kind of the end of that segment of roadway, so.
Mr. Mayor and council, just something to add, as we got into discussions, very preliminary discussions about the A U A R, we wanted the developer and frankly, the other cities to know that, you know, our site, although smaller, is closer to the interchange. So it would make sense that it would also be on a similar level of roadway improvement. We wanted to make sure that the developer understood that the city's sewer and water plan considered coming through this site and was premised on that. So I just bring that up to make sure that we're kind of, I think what Elizabeth's driving it is that we're on equal footing when it comes to, you know, phasing the development of this land.
So does that mean we're back at the capital?
Potentially. I think the, does the LRIP get?
LRIP is actually funded.
From the bonding bill, right?
I don't know how that money comes through to the LRIP, but.
It was, it was previously in the bonding package when we did the bridge and some of those improvements with the county. The LRIP money was identified in the capital bonding bill, and then we later went back for amendments to make sure that we could use it on West Freeway Drive. So I believe it may be a combination of various sources, but I think ultimately LRIP money gets funded by the legislature when they.
Correct, it's state money.
Yep.
And so Elizabeth, or Kevin, or Bill, all three. So if we're successful in our, receiving our request, what are we requesting? To finish blacktopping Hornsby Street and put sewer and water in from the north going south to that property? Does everybody know where that is? You go down Hornsby Street, then it turns to a gravel road, and you keep going till you get to Hugo.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a request at all. I just was bringing to the attention that, at the last meeting, Kevin asked to put in a application for LRIP dollars for the north North Hornsby, which is the joint project with Forest Lake. But again, Forest Lake went to the legislature the year before and got funding, and I just didn't want to be in the same situation again. Here's Lino Lakes, they're going for LRIP money, and they're going on the south end, and here on the north end now, which is 145th Lyons. We don't have a project. So, and they're both, they're both great projects, but I just wanted to be more in a collaborative than trying to catch up. And right now, we're trying to catch up with Forest Lake, because they already have money. And Lino Lakes now is going and requesting money, and we don't have our request in from the north end. And I'm not saying that we won't support their project. It's the same project. The Skanel project starts on 14 and goes up through Columbus. So they're starting at square one, too, just as we would. We just are not there yet.
Mr. Mayor and council, I may be asking the city engineer, how, how hard would it be to amend what you've been working on to include that segment that Elizabeth is describing from our south border to be newly improved roadway?
It would probably have to be a, I'm trying to think if you can amend it on the same application, or if it would be a separate application. The, the application is due December 8th, so it's, it would be a quick turnaround to try to go. And we're talking about Lyons Street then, on the north end.
Would the next round, the next round's next year then, right?
Correct.
Yeah, these are done, it's my understanding, these are done ahead of the legislative session, so they can be included in the capital bonding request. So I think.
Saying we're too late?
Well, the direction would be whether it can be done, and if it can be done this year, or whether it has to be in the next cycle.
So are you saying it can't be done, Kevin, or you don't think it can be done, but you'll come back and let us know for sure?
Well, I, I think it would be very difficult to turn, to turn the application around. We have a funding group that's processing multiple applications at this point. And so if I try to approach them tomorrow and say, we have one more for you, I'm not sure what response I would get, but.
Probably not happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Mayor and council, what we had discussed previously is having a, you know, special bonding request, which, you know, is more like a legislative favor, but, you know, so maybe there's a way to piggyback on some of the other requests that have gone before, the Lino Lakes request that's going now. And we could maybe work with our representative and senator to say, is there a way to piece this together in the bonding bill? Because we've got all these, you know, disparate parts, and we really wanted, as Elizabeth said, to think about the whole corridor, so.
Yeah, and then as I think about it, I think it would have to be a separate application, and, and again, we'd have to have county support. We've already missed kind of that window to, to go to the transportation committee, because that was last week. So it'll have to be, in terms of LRIP, it'd have to be next round, next year, so.
And I would say, given where we are with Skanel, they put the A U A R on hold, so I'm not sure that we're really in a, in a position where we're, there's detriment, because this is several legs, and who knows if this one gets approved or ours gets approved. So the question I asked Elizabeth earlier, and will ask Kevin kind of on the spot, if you have multiple applications, does that hurt you in terms of the first, second, or third application?
I would say it would.
So it may be best to sequence these, but I think Elizabeth raises a good point. We need to, and we asked some of the folks that we were dialoguing with on the A U A R, if we could get, put together something like a transportation committee that would be similar to what we did when we did the bridge funding. You know, it would be five or six agencies on both sides of the county line, and, you know, that didn't happen in part because the A U A R went on hold, but that's also something we could do in the interim. It should be a work priority, I think, for administrators, legal, engineering, as we. I think Mr. Groschala's request kind of triggered that discussion, and I think it's a good one.
So if the A U A R is on hold, why are they going forward with this LRIP request?
Mr. Mayor and council, I believe it's because they recognize that they have some roadway deficiencies, and they, they don't, they, they think that, at least the message to us is it's, it's just temporarily on hold. It's not indefinitely on hold. And so they expect Skanel to come back, and I think they're just getting their ducks in a row. So when they do, they've got some funds in hand. And because these, these requests can go independent of a development project, just as ours is on the north.
Hey, hey, Bill. This is Rob. I may have my hand up, but I just wanted to talk on the fact that I don't think we're going to be done any favors on this money moving forward, as both our representatives were in opposition of, of that bonding bill. So I think we need to move forward with what we have on the table with hopes that they do expand to Columbus. I guess that's just my, wanted to throw that out there.
And maybe that would change if their, the community they represent has requests in, but we'll see. I mean, I think, a couple of things. It seems from the engineer's direction, we should certainly go forward with the one that's prepared and not bog it down with a second request. The second point is that, to Elizabeth's point earlier, we need kind of a corridor-wide approach, and we can work on that in the coming months. We can also check in with Mr. Groschala on whether Skanel's coming off of hold, or if there's any indication, and, and, you know, whether there's a connection with their application. So I think there's some things that came out, just based on the request.
So would you suggest deferring this letter of support until those other things are done?
Not necessarily. I think we've struck a good working relationship with Lino, but we could certainly, you know, kind of, as we hand it off, ask those questions. So not making it kind of held up or conditioned, because they're under a deadline as well of the eighth. But, but make that a reason to update our information.
Elizabeth, have you had that kind of conversation with anybody from Lino yet? I mean, do they know that that would be something we'd want to see collaboration from their direction on?
So the, the collaboration was on the A U A R, and we were, you know, when that was moving forward, we were meeting as a group, and it was Hugo, Forest Lake, Columbus, and both counties were going to be invited to the next meeting. Skanel put the A U A R on pause, and we did, we did get information from Mike saying that it was being put on pause, but it wasn't being stopped, and my understanding is that they purchased the land. So I think they're, they're moving forward. They're just moving slower than anticipated. So I think that was the direction anticipated moving forward. And it just so happens that Lino Lakes has advanced this transportation project in, you mean, in forward of the A U A R. So I just didn't want to be left behind. So I think, yes, they, they have been very collaborative. I mean, they've been proactive in, in showing us what they're doing. So I think they are looking towards a team effort.
Yeah, I would say we can do both, and we can both support them and make it clear that we're looking for the same, and that we're looking for a corridor-wide approach.
Any other questions, anyone?
Off the record, Jim, do we, when you get on 145th and you go south, is that road split between Washington County and Anoka then?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So do you, we maintain one half and?
If you, if you look at that road, Lyons, we maintain up to, I'm going to say, I don't know what the, I don't know what their road is. I'm going to say, um, it's 190th. So we maintain up to 190th, and then Forest Lake maintains from 190th south. So if there's any road grading, or plowing, or garbage, or whatever, we take care of our section plus their side. And then south of that 190th, they take care of our side in the same way that we take care of theirs, if that makes sense.
Well, the 190th is their address, is over in Washington County, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you. I see where you're coming from, Elizabeth.
So I'll make the motion to approve the city of Lyons Lakes request for a support letter. So I'll make the motion to approve the City of Land Lakes' request for a support letter for the LRIP funds' extension of Outer Lake Road as presented. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Anything else, Kevin?
That completes my report.
Thank you. Attorney, report, Bill.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to kick off the next item, so I have no other report. I can dive into the next couple of items, if you like.
Sure.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I briefed with Megan Rogers since she's been working with your Personnel Committee on a number of items, including the hiring of an interim city administrator and the RFP process for the permanent administrator. So I'm going to start with the interim city administrator process, and then we can move to the second item. It's my understanding that the council, at its recent workshop, including, I believe, on November 7th, discussed and gave direction to hire an interim city administrator and interviewed Mr. Jack Davis to, for that role. And I won't go into all his credentials because you were provided those, and there was a full discussion and interview that occurred. The direction that was given was to prepare an independent contractor agreement, a consulting agreement. In some discussion with Mr. Davis, he requested, I believe it's, it's how it came about, he requested to have a temporary employment agreement. And so to give the council both of those options and to entertain that discussion, we have both documents in your packet. Actually, I believe they were prepared after the packet was finished. So if you have questions, certainly ask me. The documents are very similar. I'm going to highlight a couple of key differences. In the independent contractor agreement, the amount would be 12,000 per month. The term is similar, it's intended to be from January 2nd to March 31. It could certainly be extended in writing by the parties. That amount is 12,000 per month under the independent contractor agreement. It would have very limited benefits, things like sick time and vacation pay. The employment agreement, oh, and in the independent contractor agreement, Mr. Davis would have to obtain insurance and also indemnify the city because he would be a outside consultant. In the case of the temporary employment agreement, the amount that he would suggest is 10,000 per month, so 2,000 per month less, but he then would be eligible for para. He wouldn't have the insurance requirements, and actually, the city would be indemnifying him, which is standard when, when there is an employment contract. So that's the, the difference. He also would have access to benefits, but the city wouldn't be providing funding for those benefits. So he would have access to city benefits, like health insurance and so forth. But there would no be, there wouldn't be a city subsidy with that. I think those are the primary differences. The rest, the description of duties are all the same. So that's really, those are the key differences. So, if you want to give input, we would love your direction on which way you'd like to go, the temporary employment agreement or the independent contractor agreement.
I would just add one point of clarification. The reduction in his salary was in recognition of the fact that, as an employee, there would be some expense to the city, such as the employer's contribution to social security, unemployment, workman's comp, things like that. So he voluntarily agreed to reduce his salary to try to make it cost-neutral to the city.
Thank you.
I got a question. So para, under the $10,000 agreement, the city would pay his part of the para then, correct?
Yes.
What would, would that, how much is that going to bring in up to, same amount, 12,000 or?
Para is, is a percentage of salary. So it's, it's 6.25 percent. And then employee matches, you mean, the employee puts in, the city matches, and the city has an extra percent. So it's a percentage of, of salary, it's not, it's not a fixed amount.
So I, I believe it would be covered in that $2,000 difference. I think that's the, the rough estimate. So at, at $10,000 a month, 6.2 percent, it's just a little over, maybe $1,200.
Then we have social security, but he pays that, so.
Did that math on the fly.
Wouldn't that be 600 bucks?
Yes.
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 Oh, 600.
But, and then with social security, there's an employer's share and an employee's share. But if you are a consultant, you pay both. So, if you are, and I can't remember, I mean, it's been a long time since I've looked at that, 7% or something like that, I can't, it's split in half. So I can't remember exactly what the percentage is. But, just again, doing the calculations on the back of a matchbook cover, it seemed like 2,000 was going to more than cover it.
And in addition, as, as noted, he doesn't expect to have a city subsidy on if he elects benefits.
And I don't think he does, he doesn't intend to do health or dental or anything, or life insurance, anything like that. And then I think, the other thing he mentioned, which I think is in, is in this employment thing, is that for whatever accrued vacation or sick time he has at the end of this contract, he does not expect a payout of unused, which usually as a employee you get.
So is there a direction from the council, which are you more comfortable with?
I have a question before we have direction.
Sure.
So what's the difference? The money's the same, he's doing the same thing, whether he wears this hat or that hat.
Mr. Mayor and, and Council, the, the main difference, if you look at kind of independent contractor law, is the independent contractor is free to set their hours to meet their objectives. They have, usually they have their own entity. In fact, you know, lawyers would recommend that you have your own entity for liability protection. Likewise, you'd have your insurance and indemnification as part of that entity. So there's a little more distance between the, I mean, I'm an independent contractor, right? So there's a little more distance between the independent contractor and the city in terms of their relationship. But the way we've written these contracts, and Megan and I discussed the approach, is to make them as, as similar as possible, so you're getting essentially the same services. But it is a different contractual and legal relationship. There are duties to an employee. Recent amendments in, in the legislature, even in the last year, there's duties to employee that are different than your duties to an independent contractor. So, having said that, again, we've tried to kind of line them up, so they're, they're very similar.
So would you think you would have a little bit of a closer relationship with an employee? So you come and go, you do what you do, but you're not here every single day, doing this and sweeping the sidewalks, and doing the computers, and doing this, which is what he's going to, I mean, he has to be here as much as possible.
And those terms are, are the same in both of these contracts. I mean, both of these vehicles. I mean, it, the expectation that he's here every day, that he works the number of hours it's going to take to carry out the work scope that we've, that we've outlined. I mean, that's the same in both situations.
He is actually arguably under employment law. When you're, when there's an expectation that you meet certain hour schedule, you are more like an employee. And so there's at least an argument that what you're asking to be is an employee, even though we started off in the, the vein of an independent contractor. So, you know, I, I don't, you know, as your legal counsel, I, I don't have a big concern either way. Megan and I have talked about this, have tried to set it up, so it works in either fashion. You know, because it's a potentially three-month position, you know, it, it really doesn't matter much. I think the term is, is clear. It's also clear, I want to point out, it's also clear, and I know that, that there's been discussion with him, that just because he's interested in the permanent position, this does not mean that he's got a leg up on any candidate, and he will not be involved in any of the discussion, selection process. It's kind of like being cordoned off. The, the, in the alternative, he could have agreed to not be a, a candidate for the permanent position, and then maybe be more involved. But because he wants to throw his hat in the ring, he can't be involved in the, in that process.
And I'll just make one another just clarification. I think that both of these are for five months, it's January through May. So I think, I just want to make sure, because I think you mentioned three. I think they're five-month terms, both, in both cases. And the other thing I will say is, you know, having hired many, many people, both as consultants and as employees, generally from an HR standpoint, if you are replacing a person who is an employee, you hire an employee to replace them, not a, not a contractor. In this case, it probably doesn't matter because they'd be exempt. And really, the reason you have that is because of fair labor standard laws about overtime and things like that. But it's, it's typical that you would replace with an employee, not a contractor.
I've got a question.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to confirm what Councilmember Haglen said. I don't know, I had March in my mind, but perhaps because that's Elizabeth's term. But yes, it is May 31.
Yep.
Five-month position.
I have a question. What if things don't work out, and you're in your second month? Are we obligated to stay till June or May?
No, you should be able to.
And if he's an employee either way?
It is, it is in there, there's a cancellation clause in, and it would be for both. It's, it's the same for both, so it's, and.
And it's the same for him also?
Yes.
He can ask it at any time.
Yes. Termination on page, it doesn't have a page number. But if you look at the temporary employment agreement, it's on the second page, number three. There's three ways that, and Bill can talk about it officially, or we can just read it. But, I mean, I, I read through it, and it is, it's very clear that we should, that we would be able to terminate for any reason. Same as the consultant agreement, so it's not, it's really no different.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, that's, these short-term agreements, you always make them, you know, and especially when it's for services, you always make them very short, and you make the termination provisions very wide open for, for both parties. Because he could get in here and say, "Oh, my gosh, this is, you know, more than I expected." But, and by the same token, you could say, "It's not working out."
Rob has a question.
Rob, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just may, more wanted to make a comment and, and say thank you for taking that into the account about the, you know, 1099 person not taking direction, not being able to take direction from us. And it, it seems like it, it met the goal that I was trying to achieve. So I just want to say thanks to Megan and Personnel Committee for working through that with me.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to read this, since you raised the termination provision. The city may terminate this agreement at any time at its option for any reason or no reason at all. So, and the administrator can do it in the case of breach. So he's got a little tighter termination provision, you can have any reason to terminate.
I think the other thing that I heard is, is a potential source of concern by switching between a PSA and a, this temporary employment agreement is the process in which we initiated it, and because, that we didn't post. So, the fact that it's a temporary position, we, we don't typically post those positions, whether they're temporary or seasonal or whatever. I mean, in the past, we just have not, and we aren't obligated to, and that's true for this as well. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the process that we took stands regardless of whichever contracting vehicle we end up choosing tonight.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention that I'm, I don't see a big enough difference to not move forward with his wishes. And so I guess I'm, I'm in favor of allowing the temporary employment agreement.
Is there a second?
Oh, is it a motion?
I can read it.
Do you need motion, Bill, or not?
Yes, that's a motion, I'll second.
I'll, I'll read it officially. So I move to approve interim city administrator professional, oh no, temporary employment agreement. It's short.
Rob, second.
We've got a second. Any other questions or continuing education, anybody? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll just take on the second item, which is the city administrator search process. You have a memo from Megan Rogers, I'll just go through the high points. As you know, you've hired Ellen Heinrichs, who is working on job description, a job description for the city administrator, but also looking at all positions within the city that could be affected by this transition. She is, will conclude her interviews of key stakeholders, employees, members of the public, and city consultants. I had a nice interview with her at four o'clock today. So she's, it appears that she's well underway in her tasks, and she will report you on those interviews, and will continue work with the Personnel Committee on the job descriptions. So one of the questions is, there are, there are, again, two paths here. You could continue on the RFP process. One has been drafted by your Personnel Committee with the input from Megan Rogers. And that's actually ready to go as early as tomorrow, I believe. That would be an RFP for a search firm, and it would go to kind of known search firms that do work for cities. We've consulted the League of Minnesota Cities and others to get that list. And I believe it's ready and, and can go as early as tomorrow. The alternative is to continue to work with Ms. Heinrichs, and I believe she's willing to, to assist in that role. It would be more of a city-driven process with her support and the support of Megan Rogers, I assume. So on, on page two of the memo, Megan lays out the options. She believes the search firm will cost anywhere from 15,000 to 25,000. This document would be released tomorrow and would be due back December 8th. The, the preferred timeline is to have a partner search firm selected by January, interviews in February through March, and then offer extended by the end of March with the anticipated start date of May 1, which makes sense now that the interims have a five-month contract. So that is a, a process that, you know, is kind of well-worn, and there are firms that can provide that. Probably a little more streamlined would be option number two, and that would be to expand the consultant's work to include recruiting and hiring. She has done that work previously for nonprofits. I don't believe that she's done it for a city client, but she has done that work for nonprofits. She's done more of the organizational development with city clients, but feels comfortable that she could handle that, working with your Personnel Committee. So perhaps the advantage, and we're speculating here, the advantage of a search firm is that it will be perhaps a wider search. It might be, I don't know if it'd be nationwide, but it would certainly, could be a wider search. The advantage of using the consultant is you're now familiar with her. She seems to be working well with the Personnel Committee. It could be a quicker turnaround, and it could be less costly. So those are the, the two avenues. I think at the end of the day, like the, the prior discussion, it could be very similar, right? You're going to, the search firm and your Personnel Committee would be utilizing a lot of the same posting. You know, they're all online now, they're, they're, you know. I suppose the search firm might be able to dig deeper into a management position or know of people looking, but that's all really speculation at this point. It's really, you know, are you comfortable with using a little more homespun approach, which is using Ellen and your Personnel Committee? Or do you really want to just turn it over to a search firm and let them do the work? I, I think you've got two good options, you probably can't go wrong, but it's really what your comfort, comfort level is at this point.
So I would like to just start out with a couple of my comments. And in the beginning, I said this, so at one of our first meetings, I said it, but I did write down, because I have a few comments, and I don't want to forget them. Well, first of all, the most important one is, this is the most important thing that the city has done, at least in the three years I've been here, and possibly longer than that. To me, this is a really important position, the most important position in the city. And I don't think that. And I don't think that, well, I just think that our best chances of getting the best candidate is going through the search firm. Like Bill, you said that a search firm, while they have specific expertise on industry knowledge in searching for city administrators, you know, we have the names of firms who have gone through city searches, and that's who we would use. They have a network of contacts and a process for being proactive to search, not just for candidates who come along and say, "Oh, I think I want to work in Columbus," but ones that we search out that aren't necessarily open right now. But they would be really good candidates. I know that some of you might think that doing it ourselves might be quicker and cheaper. There's a town just north of here, and I'm not going to name it, but they recently went through this process. They went through three administrators in a short amount of time and ended up having to bring their old administrator out of retirement to put all the pieces back together. So I don't think they saved any time or money on that. I just think that having a firm that is specific to doing what we want them to do is really the way to go. And although I believe that Ellen is great at what she does, she's not a search firm. She's an organizational development consultant. So I really believe that we need to choose the right resource to search for our next administrator. And we still don't have, I mean, sending out the RFP will find out what the cost is. We can send it out at no charge. It's not, it's done. It's not going to cost us any money except for the stamp on the envelope or the email, whatever we're sent. So when we get them back, we'll see the price, and then we can make a decision at that point.
Thank you, Sue. So you're one half, one-third of the Personnel Committee, Janet?
So I do not disagree with anything that Sue has said. And as we talked about this in the committee, the reason you're getting this tossed back into your lap is because we kind of see both sides of it. Or at least, I see both sides of it. I think Megan felt similarly. I think Sue sees both sides of it, but is leaning more on the RFP process. I just, I have one question for Bill, because it was a game changer for me in terms of which side I might lean towards. And that was Megan saying that within your firm, you have a lot of contacts with the League of Minnesota Cities and knowledge of city administrators in other communities, and that you could actually, how do I want to say it? Advocate or look for candidates for us in a similar way? I mean, you're not obviously going to be a search firm, but you know, you know who's out there. You can talk to people on behalf of the city, whereas we can't really do that. Is that, did I understand that right? And are you guys willing to do that? Because that, to me, that is the part that I think Ellen cannot do for us, because she doesn't have those connections. But if you guys do, then I'm, then that makes a difference to me, which way I lean.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it is true that since we practice all over the metropolitan area, we run into city administrators, city managers, community development directors. We even know who moves from place to place. So certainly, that's something we could provide. And I would say that we would do that without cost, because it's just our knowledge. It's not, it's not legal expertise. It's something we would do just because we know people. And I don't think you charge for relationships. You know, you just, you just list your favorites and say, "Oh, here's an assistant down at Burnsville who we really like working with, who might be topping out in his or her career." So I think that's, that's a yes. I don't want that necessarily to influence you because, well, if it does, it does. But just because it's something we can provide, it's a relationship we have, it's not something we're going to charge for.
And I ask the question because, as Sue said, the, a search firm doesn't just post the position and wait for people who are looking for a job to respond. They go after people. That's why they're called headhunters. And so, and you want that. I mean, you know, and so you want, you want to get people who are known to be good workers and, you know, strong candidates to be interested in your posting, because they may not be looking. And you do that by making those connections. So if we have a way of doing that, then that makes me a little more comfortable with option two. I also think that Sue makes a good point. You can throw this RFP out there and see what the response is. And if you get back a, you know, responses that kind of give you sticker shock, you don't have to go that way. I think to your point, Jesse, or Mayor Priner, because I've heard you say this before, that you'd like to see us post this immediately. I think that if you're going to put this out for RFP, you don't want to do that. Because what I've been told, or what I've learned from experience is that search firms aren't wild about that, and they may actually upcharge you, because now you've made their search more difficult, because you've kind of jumped the gun on that. The other part is that we haven't seen a final job description from Ellen yet, so we can't post until we have that anyway. So I don't know that we're going to lose that much time by sending this out there. It is ready to go. So after saying all that, I really, I really am 50/50. I could, I can see both sides of it, and probably, I mean, I was more leaning towards the RFP side. I didn't want to lose the two or three weeks that we're going to have by putting that out there. But in the long run, we're not going to see a job description probably for a week or so anyway. And so I don't, I don't know that it's going to be...
And, and also, then you've got three weeks of holidays. So there's no magic going to happen until...
Never know. Sometimes, sometimes there's magic, but you never know.
And also, when you send this out and they come back and say, "You can get all you want for $5,000 bucks, we'll take it." If they say it's $35,000 or $45,000, we have to think twice. I guess I'm supporting both of your yes positions. Send it out, see what you get, see what it's going to cost. And if it's undoable, we'll start doing applications here. But I'm sure it'll be fine, or reasonable, or something. And then, Bill, if you know somebody who you think would be really great, you could just whisper, "Go, go to that search firm and sign up."
Well, and I think, you know, to be fair, there has been interest in this position. We've had inquiries from probably four or five different people saying, you know, "Hey, let us know when it's posted, because I'm going to be interested." And we've had, you know, connections with people from the county who know and make recommendations. So there has been interest. And to be honest, when we started this process, that was my biggest concern, because we know that this is a hard position to recruit for. It's a small pool of qualified people. So I think I'm encouraged that there is that much interest. And I think, as Bill said, I think either way, you can't lose. I don't think there's a wrong answer here.
And also, these are terribly large shoes to fill. I mean, this, sorry, this is a big deal. You're right. I mean, this is the most important thing, last 25 years. So, so I say do it. Send it out and see what we get back. Don't put a rush on it.
Is Rob's hand up, or is it still up from last time?
Oh, yeah, Rob, sorry. Is your hand up?
Yep, it is up.
Yeah, sorry, I never took it down, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we need bigger hands on there. I can hardly see.
I, it doesn't say that I have it up either, so it's goofy.
All right.
It looks like it's down now, so...
Yeah, it's down now.
So...
Thank you.
Someone want to make, and also, if I understand correctly, then the search firm does the, does the shuffling through everybody. They throw out 10, they keep top 10, they keep top 2, they keep top 1.
Yep.
And as you both have said, and Megan and Elizabeth...
Yeah, not only that, but the, one thing I didn't mention is the decision-making process. So once we get down to finalists, two, three, whatever it is, you know, and we're weighing this against this, I mean, we all, I mean, we're pretty good at decision-making, but we don't know what that, what it means at that level and with that position, so...
All right, who wants to make the motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Certainly.
Before you make the motion? So the way I understand it, that we'll send these out, but we still have a choice on whether to go either form.
Correct.
But really, all we're doing is looking to see what cost or...
And what, and what the interest is.
What's available and what's it going to cost.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's a good point, Mr. Mayor, because each of these paths are a contract with somebody. And those contracts have to be approved by the council.
So just for clarification, in the meantime, when the RFP is out, will you also ask Ellen for what, what would she charge us?
I think that's a really good point. And she needs to also, I mean, we need to have that job description, whether we go with an RFP with a search firm, or we do it ourselves. So we also need to touch base with her tomorrow at our meeting to see where she's at with that. But yes, I think we need, we would need to ask her for a proposal to do what we're, you know, what would, what would be entailed if she helped us out with this? Because it's obviously in addition to the work we've already contracted for with her.
But that wouldn't be until after she's finished doing all her interviews and writing up...
I think she's done as of today. I think she was done at the end of today.
There's one more tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
They got rescheduled.
So she'll do that. She'll package it up, get through the holiday. We'll get an answer for a report. And then, then you ask her.
I think it's, I think it's okay to bring it up tomorrow during our Personnel Committee meeting and give her some time to put it together.
All right.
So I'll make the motion. I move to approve option one, issue the RFP for the search firm. I guess that's all I need to say. Two, yeah.
That's it. This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions we could possibly have? Ron, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse? Aye. Search is on.
Exciting.
All right, now we're on to the, or anything else, Bill?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. The motion, discussion, Janet, on the SRW MOJPA funds question pages 19 and 20. Think we're $300 short somewhere.
You know, but I have good news. So yes, we are $320.03 short. But then, our final invoice from the attorney came through after this email was written, which means that each community was going to get $109.75 credit. So I called Jamie today and said, "You know, you don't have a C option, which is, we just subtract the $109.75 from the $320 we owe you, and that's what we write you the check for. Is that going to be okay, or is that going to be an accounting nightmare?" And he goes, "No, no, no, that's fine." So I would...
Except the check's already written.
Oh.
Yeah, the $302 is in the payables.
Well, it's up to you. I mean, otherwise, you, I mean, I, I don't care, one way or the other. It's really about what's the least amount of paperwork, too. So you tell me, Elizabeth. I was thinking if it wasn't written, we would just subtract it, and you'd cut a check for $210.28, which is perfectly fine at four.
And we're on the same track. I just, I, because only, according to Jamie's memo, he said only two communities owed $302. So we cut the check for $302, but then I put, we would just get a credit on the next... He said, I think he said, they, on the, they would give us a credit, credit on the 200, or the 2024 invoicing. So I just picked the credit one, because that's the least amount of paperwork.
Yeah, because I just drove out to East Bethel to sign a check for Linwood to get their $109 back. So please don't make me do that again.
All right, make the motion.
So if that's, if that's the least amount of work for you, Elizabeth and Cheryl, I would just say move to approve the Sunrise WMO Option A, accepting a credit of $109.75 on the 2024 Sunrise River WMO invoicing.
I'll second that. Any other questions or discussion? Ball for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, do you approve?
Aye.
And Jesse? Aye. All right.
I have a couple other things under my report, if that's what we're doing. Is that what we're doing?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Second thing I just want to mention, I was at the Lions breakfast, pancake breakfast on Sunday, and it was well-attended, and it was really nice. I also had a chance to just touch base with Gina and thank her and the Lions for doing their presentation. And she said that they are planning to come maybe on a quarterly basis and just give us an update of what they're working on, which I thought would be really great, so I just wanted to pass that on. And then, the last thing is I attended a Rice Creek Watershed District Partners Meeting a week ago. When was it? Kevin, you were there, too. Is that a week ago?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Close enough for government work. Okay, so anyway, it was actually, it was informative. There was several presentations, and there was some time to do some networking. During that time, I sat next to President Mike Bradley, and he was very cordial and extended, you know, wanted to know what I thought about the workshop that we all attended a week or two before that Partners Meeting. Long story short, I had mentioned to him that we had directed Elizabeth to ask our city attorney to reach out to John Kolb, their attorney, to let them know that we had interest in partnering with them at the point that it was appropriate to approach the DNR on the question about groundwater and the high water mark that was set by, by the DNR in Carlos Avery, and one of the wetlands in Carlos Avery. And he was thrilled with that. So he, he sent me an email on the 9th and suggested that they're still working through the process of working with the staff, that the staff had been instructed to work with Kevin on this. But at the point that we weren't moving forward in that capacity, and the decision was made to go higher up the food chain at the DNR, that then there would be a conversation with Attorney Kolb and Griffith on that matter. And he welcomed that. So that was nice to get that kind of collaboration. And I think we've talked about, I mean, there's, there's a couple of different things that are going on with this question. There's the ditch question, and whether or not the alternative for is the right thing. And that part of that has to do with this DNR thing. And then there's just the whole groundwater question in Columbus, and whether or not having that high water mark established has anything to do with some of the other things that have been noticed along here. I'm just wondering whether or not we should just put this on an agenda for a workshop and kind of work through the various different aspects of the question? Because I feel like we kind of swirl around in a circle. And I think it would be really good for us as a city to kind of figure out what our questions are. And if there are questions, I think there are, but maybe I'm the only one who thinks that. And then what the, what the proposed actions moving forward would be. And, and I open it up to you, Kevin, because you have had lots of conversations with us and maybe feel the same way about like, "Gosh, I keep hearing all this stuff, and I keep saying the same thing," and then you come back to meet with more. So I don't know if a workshop would help in getting, you know, maybe Tim there would be helpful. I'm throwing it out there just because I'm happy that Rice Creek is, seems more welcoming to work with us on this. I'm not exactly sure if I, if I'm ready to sign on to alternative for, but there's still questions with alternative for that the DNR has to answer, I think. So I don't know that we have to actually endorse it or not at this point. But go for it.
Well, my response will be short, but I am, I am having breakfast with Tim, on, Tim Olson, on Wednesday, to get him up to speed on a lot of these conversations that have been going on, so that he's aware of them. Because he is, he's worked with the Rice Creek Watershed District on different projects over the years. So he's, he's got a close connection with some of the board members there and the staff. So I want to get him up to speed. And I guess, in response to whether this should be on a workshop or not, I mean, I guess, like I asked you after that meeting, what are your goals? I mean, what are the city's goals in terms of drainage? And so that's, that's probably what needs to be identified before we determine what we want to do with Rice Creek.
Well, and I'm thinking that maybe the workshop will help us enunciate those goals better than what we've been... and unseat those goals better than what we've been able to do so far. I don't know. Who else?
Well, this is Sue. I just wanted to chime in, because I know that I've been involved in trying to understand what's going on there, and it's very confusing. And then, I don't know, was it a month or two ago that Tim redid our stormwater management plan? And I read through the whole thing, and it kind of made sense. But one question comes up about who owns groundwater and who owns stormwater. It's all different, and that changes everything. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I thought I understood it, but I really don't. If, if this isn't the entity that owns, it's like, it's so confusing, who is responsible for what part of the water? When it all really comes together, you know, stormwater touches groundwater, and I mean, where do you draw the line? I have no idea. I'm not saying that we're gonna solve all of that kind of problem, but maybe we could come up with some goals, questions, things to address that we could put on the agenda for a workshop. I, I would just like to just understand it better.
And I would like to see big maps that show in color where this water is running. Is it going to the north? Is it going to the south? You know, take this big table here and lay out three maps. And Tim is the expert, I guess. Have him teach us. This isn't gonna be done in a month, or a week, or a year, but we have to really get a good understanding. You know, you guys are the engineers. We may not know, I hope that you guys know, and show us and teach us and, and let us choose. We gotta pick our battles, because holy smokes. So, anyway, I agree. Pennsylvania, another workshop?
Very good.
You better buy them.
And that helps me, too, because it'll, it'll help me to prepare for whenever that workshop is. I mean, I think we'll... Maps, maps are, maps are good, maps are informative. But I won't say that we know or understand everything of the drainage in Columbus, and certainly Jim will be a big part of that and helping us to understand that, so.
Well, and I think that, actually, I want to just, I want to second that, because, you know, in talking to some of the residents, I hear comments like, oh, you know, ask Jim, he was there when we did this, or whatever. Ask Elizabeth, she was there. And it's like, I, whatever recollection you two have of that would be incredibly helpful, because that's not in minutes, that's not in any sort of, you know, public document. And I, you know, we don't have to get into it now. In fact, I don't want to get into it now, but at that workshop, that would be really helpful.
Anything else?
Nope.
Sue?
I did have a, I'm just trying to think of how much information I want to share with the, not that it's bad, Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting. We're gonna have, where our holiday party was scheduled for December fourteenth. But we talked about the budget again. Oh, I know what it was. So, our members, we talked about the duration, like, when I sign up to be on, it's for a one-year term.
Yep.
Forest Lake is for two-year terms. For some reason, I, I'm not sure why. So, they were just wondering what, if we had a process for when we're assigned. Like, when I do it, we are, we do it at our January organizational meeting. We all sign up for our committees that we're gonna be on. I sign up for that, and then I just show up at the meeting. But no, there's no communication that I know of, or anything official that we need to give them to say Sue Wagaman is gonna be assigned for a year, or however long that is. So, they were curious, because Forest Lake has their process down, how they assign their people for two-year terms.
So, do they, do they want something in writing after the organizational meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And do, you know, I understand the two-year terms, there's some continuity, you know, I mean, that in the board. If the council felt that that was a two-year seat? I know Janet's in a four-year seat for Sunrise, so.
It's been more than four years, Elizabeth. It's been an eternity.
Certainly, that's something the council, I mean, you could look at all those positions and say, would, would you like to be appointed for a two-year term? And, and that makes some sense.
Okay.
Yeah. We can do that and send out, you know, formal appointment letters.
And the other, so our other person that's on the commission from Columbus.
Doug.
Doug Wood. So, we don't, he just shows up, too. And he's been showing up for years.
A lot of years.
Mm-hmm. So, I, they were wondering if that was something that we should be communicating to them also, his participation.
Okay.
Public Commission.
We could, we can do something...
We could do it at the same time.
More formal. We've done it by chart, and in the minutes, you know, approving those, but we can, we can do something more, more formal.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sue. Ron?
Well, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it or not, but I brought it up to Elizabeth today. I just want anybody else's opinion on it. Is it an issue? Or maybe it's not an issue, but these people that leave chairs and junk on the side of the road in front of their driveway and put a free sign on it? I, we just happen to have a few people that leave them out there for a month or two, and I just wonder if that's something we should take into. And, and I think, like Elizabeth said, maybe put it in a nuisance to the code enforcement officer. I mean, there's, you know, it's getting out of hand, and there's, there's a person that's been out there a month. I mean, it just, like Elizabeth said, they come and they pick it up and throw, they're digging around, looking for something, and then they leave the other junk. I mean, I just think it's something we should address, maybe, but I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are. Maybe you don't get it on the south side.
I, we get it on our road, on Pine Street. I don't know if maybe that's the, the complaint. I haven't heard of it. But we do have somebody on our, on Pine Street who puts stuff out and leaves it out there. And sometimes it's gone. I, I have no problem with people putting something out there and put a free sign on, and then it's gone, you know, within a few days or a week at the most. But a month is too long.
Well, it's, it's, this is on Kettle River, and it's, it's, this goes on all the time. In fact, sometimes you don't know where the free stops, free stuff stops.
Right.
And their junk in their yard continues, you know, what's what? And it's, it's, I, I've seen it on Notre Dame, I've seen it on Kettle River. They'll leave chairs out there through rainstorms, and, and it'll be there for a week. And you ought to know that no one's gonna pick it up. It's all soaking wet and...
Moldy, yeah.
So, I, I don't know. Maybe we can address that someday.
To tie onto what you're saying, Ron, we see that stuff as well. And I actually told my guys to start taking pictures, because what we end up, what ends up happening for us is it sits by somebody's driveway, and then somebody takes it, and they drag it around town or do something. And then, we end up picking it up in the ditch somewhere along the line. And then, ultimately, the city pays to get rid of it during our cleanup. So, we started looking for that. So, if you see something big, you know, we might take a picture of it and say, hey, it's on Kettle River at eighty-six twenty-eight. I know there's not an eighty-six twenty-eight there, but... So, we just started paying attention to that, because we've had, actually, people call and say, hey, you've, somebody's dumped something in my yard, and now, I mean, we're kind of responsible to pick it up at that point, because it's in the right of way. So, so it is a big problem, for sure.
And maybe, Elizabeth, maybe Sean could look at other cities and see if they got a special ordinance on it.
And, and we can look. I know years ago, we looked at garage sales, and we looked at a few other things, but I think you can look and see what others have done for that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I would just ask that there's a caveat, that if they're giving away pumpkins at Halloween, that we let them do that. The only thing I see in my neighborhood is free pumpkin signs, which is like, oh, yay, here we go. I haven't seen furniture. Not, not, not in my neighborhood. I see it in Lino, when I drive through Lino to get, you know, the Main Street or whatever, but I haven't actually seen it on my end of town.
I've seen toilets on our street.
No, I see them on Lake Drive.
Do you?
On the east side.
You name it, I've seen it.
We probably don't get enough traffic for it to be worth their while to stick anything but pumpkins out there.
If they're trying to get rid of garbage, or if it's something that's decent.
Yeah.
Rob, anything from you?
Uh, Mayor, as you know, our fire board meeting was canceled, so I don't have anything other to add tonight. Thank you.
Yep. No quarterly report from code enforcement. Public Works, Jim?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one update. A couple of weeks back, the weather took a serious turn for the worst, and we were talking about park fences and things like that. So, I talked to Century Fence and said, hey, I would rather wait till spring now, because it was snowing and it was cold. And then, we had this really nice warm-up. And they called and said, hey, I think we're supposed to get the fence in this week. Can we put it in? And I said, well, the weather's nicer now. I instructed Public Works to pull out the posts that were over there, so within the next week, week and a half or so, Century Fence should put that fence up. So, that's the only thing that I have. Kevin asked if he could jump in on my report, because he must have forgot something, so.
All right, go for it, Kevin.
Yeah, I did want to mention that, and I can't remember if it's been brought up at the council level or not, but Anoka County Highway Department is conducting a planning study, corridor study, for Lake Drive, Casade twenty-three, from Main Street up through Kettle River. And so, they've engaged a consultant to, to conduct that study, which is also Bolton and Mink. So, Jim and I have been sitting on that committee, the, the, the planning team, which consists of a number of Anoka County staff, amongst others. But in any event, to, to keep a long story short, they are having an open house to take public input. That open house will be on December fourteenth from five to seven, and it'll be next door in our community center room.
Okay, five to seven. Thank you.
That's all I had.
Is that, is that the, are they widening it? Is that what they're doing? Is that what they're proposing to do, from Main Street to Kettle River?
The planning study will, will determine what kind of improvement would be contemplated for the future, so.
And does this include the roundabout thing that we talked and they got grant money for?
It would tie in, it would tie into that roundabout that's, that we have money for.
And the time again was seven?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Thank you. Connor, anything from you?
Nothing from you this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I have one thing on, on the report, which is the transit question. Gary Lee contacted both the mayor and I, indicating that he felt it was important that the city start to become involved in a transit and/or mobility. I don't know what you want to call it, you didn't even mean group. And so, he contacted Forest Lake and indicated that they wanted, he wanted to put a meeting together. And the meeting for, was December twenty-first. And I think this is all coming after COVID, where we had, we had a transit system prior to COVID. We had a lot of bus routes, you know, routes coming out of the Transit Center in Forest Lake, out of, out of Running Aces. And really, it started whittling away when COVID came, and it really hasn't built, built back up. And we don't really have a, a central, a centralized senior mobility routes either in this area. So, he asked if someone, you know, wanted to be involved in the groups. And he, he went to go put a meeting together on December twenty-first and sent out this email. And the mayor from Forest Lake indicated that she didn't think that December twenty-first would be an ideal meeting date. Just, you know, it's holiday time, people are, you know, looking at other things, and asked them to put the meeting in January. So, right now, that's tentatively where that meeting is. And so, my question to the council is, is there someone on the council that wants to be a liaison to, to these types of meetings? This is, this is really a policy-setting meeting, where you're gonna work with the council. Do you want to bring transit routes back? Where would they, you know, where would they go? Would they stop in Forest Lake? Would they stop somewhere in Columbus? We're, we're in the Metro Transit taxing district. You know, both Forest Lake and Columbus came in at the same time. We did purchase buses. I'm not sure what happened with the buses after COVID. But I think that's what he's trying to fire up again, is, you know, where would the transit lines be? And, and in between all of that, transit stations were built. A huge one in Blaine, one at County Road fourteen. So, there are other areas that now also have transit and buses. But it is costly. You do have to, the Metro Transit taxing district, the taxing district is for capital, and that's how you purchase buses. So, Metro Transit pays for the drivers, we pay for the assets, meaning the buses. So, do you think you want to participate in this group? Do you want to put this on the organizational meeting and have someone assigned to this? Again, this is more of a policy group, saying this is what we want.
Elizabeth, I'd be willing to do the first meeting, for sure, on the twenty-first, just to see what the ask is, and...
And this is Rob, too. If you want me to be involved, Jesse, I'd be happy as well.
Thank you.
Or Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Because it sounds like a lot of, a lot of expense without much results. And I'd like to be, yeah, I'd like to be able to interpret whatever he's thinking of. So, put me down for that.
Elizabeth, did you say, though, that it's not gonna happen on the twenty-first, it's in January now?
Yeah, I, I've seen emails going back and forth now, and I think that the last one I saw was asking, again, that it be put off to, to January. So, I'm, I, I don't think the Jan, the December twenty-first meeting will actually happen. But I haven't seen anything final. I've just seen four emails going back and forth.
I, I have a question. A lot of times, for apartments, being close to public transportation is important. Do you think that's true for the one that we're hoping still will go in on the northeast quad?
Ms. Mayor and Council, you often see that linkage. I don't think it would be, it certainly wouldn't hurt. I don't, I think they'll go forward either way. But yes, you do see that linkage between high-density housing and transit.
And is the, is the transit stop that used to be in the parking lot of Running Aces still a viable? Or did they kind of withdraw that option, so that's no longer?
Yeah, they, they withdrew their, their, it was a lease option. And as, my understanding is that lease, lease option is no longer.
So, we'll have something to do in the new year. Anything else, Elizabeth?
I have nothing further.
All right, we're quickly zipping down our list here. So, the announcements and reminders, the planning commission meeting is December sixth. The next city council is the twelfth. And, city council workshop is the twelfth, sorry, at five-thirty. And the next council meeting is on December thirteenth at six P.M. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Janet, I move to adjourn.
And a second?
Sue, I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Recording stopped.